Welcome, everybody, to the 3:30 briefing session, Spokane City Council. I'm Lori Kinnear, Council President Pro Tem. And Council President Beggs will be joining us remotely. Miss Sister, could you please read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Council President Pro Tem Kinnear.
Present.
Council Member Abingle.
Present.
Council Member Cathcart.
Present.
Council Member Stratton.
Present.
Council Member Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Council Member Zepone is absent.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Perkins. Want to take it away?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Good afternoon, Council President Beggs, Council President Pro Tem, Kinnear, and members of the City Council. This will be the advance briefing for Monday's meeting of April 25. Number one up on our consent agenda is the purchase of a mobile command vehicle. The presenter is Major Mike McNabb.
Good afternoon, Council President, City Council. Council President Pro Tem. Not used to saying that one. Okay, so we are on the home stretch to get our hostage negotiations team a suitable vehicle. They are currently outfitted with a 1999 motorhome that's been infested by vermin and falling apart for many years. This vehicle provides a safe, suitable way for our hostage negotiations team to respond to these incidents. They are a critical part of our de-escalation model when it comes to barricaded hostage negotiations and suicidal subjects. This vehicle would give them a safe, smart, mobile workspace that would be ideal for these, de-escalating these situations, so there's no use of force or minimal use of force. The vehicle is constructed in a way so the officers have a private area when they're doing active negotiations. As you may remember from Public Safety Committee, a lot of these negotiations reach critical moments where any sort of noise from somebody's cellphone or radio background talking can really change the mood or the ability for negotiators to reach peaceful negotiations with somebody in crisis. The vehicle was initially brought to us by the hostage negotiations team with the manufacturer from Nomad. As an exercise in thoroughness, I had this, our city fleet department, go out and do a search of their own, and they happened to come back with the exact same vehicle, exact same manufacturer. We looked at other options as far as converting a civilian-designed recreational vehicle, and what we found was is that the amount of work that would have to go into custom fabrication really did not make it cost-effective. Any questions?
No questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Major McNabb. Item two is a discussion regarding a value blanket order for a waste-quit manufacturing company for new metal refuse and recycling containers for the solid waste disposal division. Presenter is Chris Avery.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Council members. Today, I'm seeking approval for a three-year, one-month bag blanket with waste quit through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op for the purchase of steel, solid waste, and recycling dumpsters and containers. This value blanket is estimated to have an annual expenditure of $550,000, including tax. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Items three and four. Item three is the purchase of four Ford Mach-E electric vehicles for the fire department. Item four is a contract with Inful Public Sector for the annual contract maintenance of the fire department's computer-aided dispatch, also known as CAD. Our presenter for items three and four will be Deputy Fire Chief Jay Atwood. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council. Council President and Council Pro Tem President Kinnear. The first item is for the purchase of four Ford Mach-E all-electric vehicles through Bud Clary Ford in Longview. This will be purchased on the state contract, and this will not exceed $204,664. That includes tax. And this will be largely funded through the extra money or revenue generated through the expansion of the Fire Prevention Bureau that was approved by council last year. Any questions on that?
What's the primary use of these vehicles?
So, these vehicles will be used by our fire inspectors to go out and complete the duties that they're assigned, essentially inspecting buildings, occupancies, doing approvals for plans, et cetera, within the city of Spokane or the city limits only. And these will be an integral part in allowing them to be able to get out and do that. And then, purchase of doing these, or the purpose of doing the all-electric, obviously, is to fulfill the intent for going green or having more efficient vehicles in the fleet.
Thank you.
Can you, what's the fund you said that we save money in, and that's why we have these extra dollars? Can you clarify that? I just, I missed what you said.
So, last year, council approved a change in our, essentially, the funding for the Fire Prevention Bureau were expanding, or we increased costs in different places to, for fire inspections, for permitting, et cetera. That, I'm hesitant to call it revenue, but essentially, that extra revenue generated is allowing us to, has allowed us to expand the Fire Prevention Bureau, so we've added five fire inspectors and additional plan review engineer. And so, because of that expansion, we're going to be able to touch more businesses and do a more effective job at getting out and bringing in the permitting fees, et cetera, that we should have been prior, but just haven't had the staff to do that.
Well, I just, I remember when we approved that, because it was a very tough vote for me to take, and I voted to approve it. And we were told at the time that those dollars were going to very specifically be used to increase the inspection times in developments. And so, I'm wondering, is there not a better place for these dollars to go that would help to actually get inspections, so more staff, more, I'm just kind of curious about that aspect. Why luxury electric vehicles?
To be honest, I don't know that I'm the one to be able to answer that question. That'd have to be our Fire Marshal Lance Dahl. I know that, you know, it was a programmatic increase, so it covered more than just personnel and the personnel that we brought on. That was, you know, based on the numbers that Fire Marshal Dahl put together to say, this is how many people we need to be able to get out and effectively do inspections, et cetera. And so, you know, I think programmatically, there were costs, you know, built in or associated to help cover what that looks like. Each of the inspectors that we currently have have a vehicle. They're not take-home vehicles, but they're vehicles they use while on duty to be able to get out and canvass the city and do these inspections. Again, the purchase of these vehicles was the directive, or whatever you want to say, is trying to meet the initiative of going green and having vehicles that are more sustainable.
Well, I'll follow up with Lance or Chief Schaefer, but I can't help but feel a bit misled in that vote.
Any other questions?
Deputy Chief Atwood, thank you, sir.
You bet. And then, the second item that we had was the contract renewal for Inful Public Sector. This is for the Inful Enroute CAD system, our annual maintenance agreement for that system. This is a shared expense between Spokane Fire Department and Shrek. It's billed back, their share of it's billed back through the ILA that we established, based on call volume percentage. This, the amount this year is $98,640.76. That covers us from May 1st of this year through April 30th. It does also include a couple of extra, what we call seat licenses, that Shrek requested, and those will be billed directly back to Shrek for the entirety of those costs.
Thank you, Chief Atwood. Appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you.
Item five, multifamily housing property tax exemption. Five A is with the East Cleveland Avenue Investments. Five B is Regal Residence LLC. And the presenter this afternoon is Kara Froschewski.
Thank you.
It will be, but can you share that into the WebEx meeting as well?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Council President, Council President Pro Tem.
Can you minimize that little box that's up there, too? Sorry about that.
Yes, certainly. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you shut that door a little bit?
What was that? Oh, I don't think that was for me, was it? Okay. So, as a quick review, the multifamily tax exemption program encourages mixed-income, multifamily building within targeted areas of the city. It works in tandem with other programs, including historic preservation, promoting community development, and particularly encouraging housing in areas consistent with planning for public transit. This is information that we last saw at the Urban Experience presentation a week ago on April 11th. So, we'll be looking at two applications that have come forward. The first is Cleveland Multifamily. The applicant has applied for one 23-unit building. This is located at 155 East Cleveland Avenue. The zoning here is residential multifamily. The estimated cost of the project is $5.2 million, and the applicant is applying for a 12-year exemption, which will meet income and rent restrictions. Here's a photo of the site. It has been vacant for some time. The second project is Regal Multifamily. This is for one 12-unit building located at 2520 and 2528 North Regal Street. This is also zoned residential multifamily. The cost of this project is estimated to be $2 million, and this applicant also intends to finalize as a 12-year exemption for income and rent restrictions. And this site has also been vacant for some time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Froschewski. Item six is property sale agreement for surplus residential property at 1927 East Dalton Avenue. The presenter is Dave Steele. Mr. Steele?
Good afternoon, Council members, Council President. This property was surplus back in 2019. It's part of a lot, so that's why you'll notice that the sale price is not, you know, as high as, you know, a lot of lots are going for in the market. The adjoining property owner will be purchasing this, and it'll go ahead and fill out their existing lot. It's a property that we picked up off of the tax rolls from the county. We have a whole slew of cleanup and liens against it, so the proceeds will be used to backfill the budget lines that those cleanups came from. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Items seven and eight, standard items on our advance briefing agenda. Item 7A is reported the mayor pending claims of payments for parks and library. Item B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. Both 7A and 7B will be completed and filled out for their entirety for council consideration on Monday, April 25. Item eight, city council meeting minutes from previous meetings. That information will also be completed and ready for council discussion, consideration on Monday, April 25. Moving to the special budget ordinances, we have three specific to Spokane Police Department. First ordinance is, it also relates to forfeitures and the contributions fund. The first one is going to be discussing the procurement of office furniture and equipment. The second will be to discuss the expanded use of various confidential funds. And the third and final item will be discussion regarding the need to procure mobile device software, as well as a vehicle camera system. And all three of those ordinances will be presented by Major Mike McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, Council President, City Council. So, the first special budget ordinance is to access federal forfeiture funds. The reason we chose federal forfeiture funds for this particular expense is because there's more latitude of what you can spend it on. It doesn't have to have that direct nexus to drug enforcement activity like the state drug forfeiture fund does. In that request, we are requesting a total of $89,960 to purchase $75,000 worth of office furniture and $14,960 worth of minor equipment, which includes a drone, a vehicle computer reader for our major collision investigations, and $3,000 worth of personal safety equipment.
At which location is the furniture going to be utilized?
It'd be for the Gardner Building. When we got the Gardner Building years and years ago, there was no furniture with it. A retired, now-retired officer was able to find some furniture that was going to be thrown away by Safeco, and we've been using that ever since. And I'm not exaggerating, not hyperbole, it's literally held together by zip ties. And we recently did a remodel, and we would like to finish that off with these cubicle walls. The other part of that furniture expense, Councilwoman, is for stand-up desks that we constantly get hit with through risk management, through ergonomic assessments. Somebody goes to the doctor, having back pain, what have you, and then $2,300 later, we're buying them a desk. So, we'd like to access this money to buy this furniture at no cost to the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Go on to the next, sir. Okay, the next, the next two, we're getting into the drug forfeiture funds. This first one is to increase the confidential fund allotment from $80,000 to $120,000, so that's, we're asking for a $40,000 increase. With the influx of fentanyl in the community, we are trying to keep pace with our drug investigations. We are seizing more drugs than ever we have before. In fact, the DEA said that in 2021, they saw a 1,098% increase in fentanyl seizures in Spokane County. We're seeing a large increase of drug overdose. It is an epidemic in our community. We're, on average, we're spending $10,000 a month in confidential funds. If we don't have this $40,000 increase, we're going to run out. That impacts drug investigations towards the end of the year. During my briefing, during Public Safety, I showed that we, the years that we ran out and had to use money out of the general fund. So, this is, again, tax, not taxpayer money. This is drug funds put back into our drug funds, and we use it to buy more drugs to further drug investigations. Okay, moving on to the last one, also still in the drug forfeiture funds, and this is to purchase software, to renew a software subscription for Celebrite, which, premium, which basically unlocks encrypted devices when we have legal process to do so. After we secure a search warrant, this allows us to unlock devices and get the information we need. It's, there isn't really a crime nowadays that we don't have some type of social media or phone-related IT that helps solve the crime. So, that's $65,000 for that subscription renewal. And if we were not to get that renewal, we, when we did not have this in the past, we had to send phones out to Celebrite to get them unlocked, and it's usually about $2,000 apiece. So, with the amount of drug investigations, homicide investigations, domestic violence investigations, human trafficking investigations, all these things, we need to get into these phones quickly, and this allows us to do so. The other portion of this request is $9,650 for a vehicle-mounted camera. And I did some more research, Councilman Cathcart, on that camera itself to go on our Bearcat, our armored vehicle. When SWAT officers are on these calls, what we noticed with a recent officer-involved shooting, and the reason this came up was a recommendation from the Deadly Force Review Board, is that we have a camera mounted to the vehicle so we could see what's going on. When a SWAT officer has their camera mounted to their chest, it's often obstructed by their rifle or other gear, so we're not seeing what's going on. This camera will allow the officers to be able to point the camera remotely from a keyboard inside the Bearcat. It also has thermal imaging, which makes it expensive. Not FLIR, but thermal heat signature imaging. It also has the capability to zoom, which, and it's rugged, well-weather, that type of thing. That, with the controller, with the recording device that goes inside the vehicle, is what brought it to that total.
And just quickly, so the purpose of that camera is to give us a better idea of what's happening in a moment when there are, when the SWAT team is involved, correct?
Right. For increased transparency, so we can capture what's going to happen during the incident. We don't miss anything.
And you said that it's controlled from inside the vehicle?
It is.
Okay. And so, then, as the officers are going out, is somebody still in the vehicle controlling that, or is it just going to be set as the officers go out?
As they're, you know, competing for their time and stuff when they're on scene, the first thing, probably, if they have time to do so, you know, other priorities could take priority. But they point the camera in the direction of what's going on. Generally speaking, when they get to a vehicle barricade or a house barricade, once they get the vehicle set, it stays there. And so, once they get the camera set in the view they need, it would stay there for the most of the call. There might be some exceptions to that. Yes, sir?
Well, I think it's really important just to have, you know, a record of everything that's going on, so I definitely support it. I'm wondering, though, have you, have you looked into it all to see if any other departments around the country or elsewhere are experimenting with cameras and different body placement for better angles, to get better, to capture better footage? Or is that just not something anybody is really worried about?
I think that it's, well, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider with body-worn camera, and I'm no expert. I haven't done a lot of research on it, but, you know, one example is people have said it's like watching baseball, baseball game through a drinking straw, right? You only get one little view of things, and it's constantly getting knocked off, turned off by equipment, wrestling, what have you. So, there's, I have not heard of a perfect solution yet, I guess is my answer.
Gotcha.
Major McNabb, so this camera, is it, can it be taken off the vehicle and used elsewhere?
It's going to be, well, it's going to be permanently affixed to this vehicle, but I suppose with some tools and whatnot, we could take it off.
So, if you needed to use it in another application, it's possible to?
I don't think, quickly, no.
Okay.
Council President Pro Tem.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Major.
Okay. Thank you.
Our final briefing item for the advance briefing agenda is under resolutions. The first resolution is for modification of the transportation benefit district projects for 2022. The second is regarding the approval of Cycle 10 traffic calming projects, and I understand the presenter is Council President Beggs.
Yep. Thanks, folks. Shana wasn't able to be here. I'm not the expert on it. The first is an updated list of transportation benefit dollar projects. Unfortunately, the actual exhibit is not in the packet, so we'll have to update that before next week. But it's the projects that we're asking to reapprove. And then, the second one is the traffic calming dollars proposed to be spent, and there is a list of all those projects out there. She briefed this previously for everybody at committee.
Thank you. Right. Before we approve this agenda, we've had requests for a deferral of the report by CHHS Department regarding the recommendation from the COC for shelter operator. So, we've had that. And, Mr. McClatchy, do we need to suspend the rules for all these? We have a deferral request, and then we have two additions, one deferral, oh, and a substitution. Do we need to?
Council President Pro Tem, are you talking about the current agenda now?
I'm talking about the, on the consent agenda tonight, there's a request to defer.
Have you had an approval of the advance agenda?
I was going to do this before we do the advance. Do you want me to reverse it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Whichever you like, but traditionally.
Brian's telling me, yes, you're not doing it right. Okay. So, let's go ahead and approve the advanced agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
All right. So, if there is a deferral of 36190, you wouldn't?
We're looking at the consent agenda. We'd like to defer number eight.
Number?
Do we need to suspend, or can we just defer? Great.
Just a motion to defer.
I need a motion to defer number eight on the consent agenda for tonight.
Let's see what it is. So moved to defer till when?
Indefinitely.
Do I have a second?
Indefinitely.
Yes.
So moved to defer indefinitely.
I thought it was one move.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Shana may have something to add, too.
I would ask council if you would please consider deferring to April 25.
Councilmember Wilkerson, that's up to you. You're the motion maker.
April 25?
Something.
And I know.
City Administrator, is that an optimistic date, or is you will be prepared to bring something forward?
We will be prepared to bring something forward on Monday, April 25, if the council is so inclined to consider that request.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the friendly amendment.
Council President Beggs, you look expectant. Would you like to say something?
No. I'm fine. Sorry. I forgot to unmute myself, or mute myself.
Would there be time for a committee touch on this, if we do the 25th?
What's up next week?
For committee on the 25th?
Before the 25th, or the committee on the 25th.
So, that would be?
It's next Monday.
Next Monday.
Whose committee is that?
Councilmember Cathcart's committee on the 25th.
It's not my committee.
I'm all full.
Pies?
That's not mine.
That's Councilwoman Kinnear.
Councilwoman Kinnear.
Would you like to reconsider perhaps?
Oh, that's right. Your Public Safety. I was getting confused.
Another week, so we have time for a committee meeting?
If the council would like to have a committee meeting prior to the formal vote, we would be more than happy to accept that, but we will be ready on Monday, April 25, to bring a recommended provider to this council for consideration.
Can you add it, Lori, to Pies?
I cannot.
Oh.
We are full.
Is there a study session time?
Go ahead, Mr. Beggs. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, we have not seen the proposals yet, at all, any of them. And so, we're definitely going to need a significant presentation and time to consider, so I'm hoping we can do that on Monday. But it looks like, I'm hearing, there's no time on the Pies committee currently.
And study session is full?
Oh.
So, go ahead, Mr. K.
When do we think?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, when do we think we will get copies of the proposals and a full present, the ability to have a presentation?
The ability to have a presentation would be Monday, April 25, which would mean the proposals would be to you prior to that date.
Can I ask a question?
So, that's in the next four days? Close to 25?
That is correct.
Go ahead.
So, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I just, I'm struggling with, if we're waiting on a recommendation from the COC, what is taking them so long? They've had these applicants for They've had these applicants for two weeks. Is there, are they doing due diligence, or like, what's the thing that's holding up them from making a recommendation?
There's still some discussion going on that's being finalized, as it relates to the proposals that are before them today.
But it's basically in their hands to determine the speed with which we move?
It's in their hands to make a, make a recommendation that is an advisory recommendation.
Sure.
So if they are not prepared to give an advisory recommendation in the next four days, are we still going to be able to have our presentation on the 25th?
Yes.
I would say we should go ahead and vote on this. We have a, a motion, we have a second for April 25. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Okay, all those in favor of a deferral till April 25? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Was Brian an a?
I was, I was a nay.
Were you an a, a or an a? I or an a, Brian?
I was, I was an aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, good. Now I need a motion to suspend the rules for the rest of these.
So moved to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And then we need a motion to, what do we need a motion to do now, Mr. McClatchy, to add to our agenda?
That's correct. You have Resolutions 2022034, 0035, and Ordinance 36186. You could entertain a motion to add them all, or you could entertain individual motions?
Let's do individual ones. Let's do 0034 first. Do I have a motion to add that? Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think I'm reading Brian's lips.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, and then we have 0035.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And on C36186, we have a substitution.
Is that my amendment?
Yes.
Yeah. So I would, I would so move the, the amendment that I sent out, and I'll read it just so that it's on the record. So where I added this is after number four, and I don't have the, it's 120203, I don't have the full thing in front of me. But number four, the vegetation obstructs rights of way, authorize traffic signs, and then we're adding traffic control devices per 12020203, or is determined to interfere with line of sight, or creates other identified traffic or safety concerns. The section I'm adding says, if compliance requires major pruning, as defined under SMC 1202910, the city will provide an exemption to the requirement that the property owner must hire a licensed arborist. And my, my concern on that, same as I had shared last week, is simply that if it's a simple fix, it's a branch that happens to exceed those two inches, the last thing I want to see is a property owner forced to hire a professional arborist to come out to basically do a very, very simple, what is a very simple pruning. And so, just to clear, because we're talking about signage, so it's not very much that they're ultimately gonna have to be removing, and I just want to make sure that they are not on the hook to, to go out and hire a professional arborist to come out and do that work. So that's, that's the intention behind this.
Any comment on this?
Yeah, I, I support it, too, because if anybody's hired a contractor recently, you know how expensive contractors are to get out to get to your place, and it's typically because they want to make a certain amount, you know, every day. And even if it's just a simple, you know, pruning, there's a certain amount that they need to make every time they show up and set up their equipment. And so, something that is very simple and seems very simple can still be quite costly in the hundreds of dollars, which can be quite prohibitive to, to people of lower income. And so, for me, I support this amendment. That way, we can either have the city do it, or provide an exemption, so that we can just do it on our own.
Go ahead, Councilmember Stratton.
Councilmember Cathcart, can you define major, I think?
It's defined in the code.
Okay.
And it's?
And it stays to the small, the smaller end?
1202910 is where that definition for major pruning is, and that, that's why I referenced that. And it, yeah, major pruning is anything that's a branch that's two inches or larger, and there's some other.
Two inches in diameter, yeah.
Yeah.
Council President, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we heard from staff last week that they would take care of this in almost all cases, and I just, I'm reluctant to exempt prunings from the arborist, because people could get up to mischief in that. I totally understand the desire to protect homeowners from pain, but it sounds like city staff is gonna take care of that in most cases. So rather than change the code, I would rely on that unless it becomes a problem, and if it does, we could address it by making sure that city staff took care of it as opposed to exempting it from arborists doing the work.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I certainly understand the cost that Councilmember Cathcart has brought forward. I'm a little concerned that citizens are out there who are not following the code, and we could have all types of potentially random prunings or cutting inconsistent with the code. So if city staff says they will address the issue, my concern is that they have some type of way to mediate that if it didn't happen, but at this point, I'm not in support of the code, but some type of looking at how we could remedy that in some other form if that does not happen by city staff going forward.
I would add to the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can go if you want.
I, I have to go last.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I, in my dealings, typically, people don't want to put things in writing if they don't want to always have to follow them, and I think if this is something that the city staff says, oh, yeah, we'll be doing this, then I don't see why there's a problem in putting it in writing. I think that's a guarantee to the community that we mean what we say, and so, if it's something we're gonna be doing, let's put it in writing.
And, oh, go ahead. So that might be, because I've been very lucky in my district when I've had issues with pruning with households that can't afford to hire an arborist. We've worked it out, and city staff has gone out, but there isn't anything in writing. And now I'm in a situation where Streets has been doing something regularly in one neighborhood for many, many years, and we have new people there, and they say, well, no, we're not responsible for doing that, there's nothing in writing that says, but you've been doing it for 15 years. So I don't know what we could do. I would feel better if something was in writing that city staff would say, or that, you know, certain branches, blah, 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 would be covered by City Spokane.
And that, that's the intent. If there's a better, different way, I'm certainly very open.
Okay.
So I'll weigh in here. I worked for over a year on the urban forestry ordinance, and protecting street trees and public trees is very important to me. It's very important to our community. We agreed to increase the canopy up to 40%. That's a heavy lift. Street trees are valuable commodities. I would not ask Uncle Bob to come over and do my plumbing, or my electrical, or put on a roof. I'm certainly not gonna ask Uncle Bob to trim a $17,000 street tree, or even touch it, if he's not a licensed arborist. So I think there are other, and in addition, more to your point, Councilmember Stratton, the staff has been very willing to work with us to accommodate folks who can't pay for some of these larger jobs, and this is a very specific thing, where a tree might be blocking a stop sign or another sign that's going to provide safety. So it's very specific, it's not gonna come up very often, and I think we can work out another way, another workaround, so that people aren't subject to that. I don't think this is it. I'm not gonna vote for this, because I'm very concerned that people are going to take this as carte blanche and go out there with their skill saw, and we've seen the devastation that people can do with a skill saw and very little knowledge, and, and cut down branches that are way beyond the size that we've said that they could do. So I'm gonna be voting no on that. Go ahead.
So what do you think about deferring this? Are we in a timeline for this?
I don't think so. I was just about to propose the same thing.
If we could defer it?
If we wanted to get together and talk, because I think, you know, we might all be in agreement of like, making sure that it's not a, a cost isn't prohibitive for lower-income folks, and still finding a way to keep that visibility, and so I would be, I would be open to it. And if we wanted to defer another week and get together and?
Just see what we might be able to come up with.
So, Councilmember Wilkerson, are you amenable to amending your motion?
I am amenable to amending my motion. I would propose deferring. Looking at our timeline, I'm looking at like, May 2nd, that's two weeks out.
That's fair.
That's fair.
That be equitable to everyone?
Yeah, if next week's already so full.
If next week's full, so.
And would you be willing to second that?
Absolutely, second.
Right, second.
So instead of a motion to amend, it's a motion to defer until the date's certain?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Am I within my bounds here?
No, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear in the record that we knew what was going on.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so we have motion to defer from May, till May 2nd, is that what you said?
Yes.
All right, and we have a second? Great. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Great, thank you, that was easy. All right. And then we have one other. We need to substitute 0034, which is the EMS levy, with Councilmember Bingle's version. So do I have a motion to do that?
So moved. So moved.
What did he say?
He said so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, thank you. That is it. Now we're gonna go into, go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting, but we have one more. Under Ordinance C36190, I believe the hearing date, May 9th, needs to be updated to June 6th.
I don't have that.
And that's the interim zoning ordinance concerning the siting of indoor emergency shelters.
Oh.
I'll bring that motion.
What's the motion?
So the motion is to change the hearing date, as Ms. Pfister said, and that's because when we first set the hearing date, it was before we knew we were gonna defer this, so it gives more time to publicize to the public, so they can participate.
Okay, so Council President, are we still, are we, are we deferring that to May 9th? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're, we're not deferring the ordinance, we're amending the language of the ordinance to set a hearing date on June 6th.
Got it, got it. I've got Hannah Lee right here, and she makes everything very clear. Thank you. Okay, so is that a motion from you?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Sorry, I, I do have a quick question on this. So we're, we're moving this back one week, I guess we've deferred it a couple weeks now. Is it necessary to move it to June 6th if we're trying to get this done quickly?
So we're just moving the hear?
The hearing date, right, so we're, we're deferring?
To May 9.
The zoning one week, but the hearing a month after, and so I was just curious.
If I could ask the city attorney, Mr. Richmond, to address that? Councilmember?
Hello. Good afternoon. Yes, this ordinance temporarily amends the zoning code, and so the city council will take action tonight doing that. But when we do that on an emergency basis, without a hearing, we're required to have a hearing within 60 days, and so we're talking about that hearing that has to occur within 60 days. So the ordinance will get adopted and go into effect this evening, I anticipate, but we'll have a hearing in two months, where the public can come in and weigh in on it if they want to.
Any questions for Mr. Richmond while he's there?
Aye.
Go ahead, Council President.
Council President Pro Tem, I just wanted to clarify for Councilmember Bingle that we did not defer this ordinance for a week, it was only the operator contract.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Richmond. All right, everybody's clear? Thank you. So we're gonna vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Aye.
Thank you. We are going to go into executive session for 30 minutes? Is that correct? We're going to be discussing litigation, and then I'll come back and say we're done. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
No further action is expected when they return.
You don't have to sit here, I do.
Your only little petunia in the night.
Our meeting is adjourned, we'll see you all at 6 p.m. for our legislative session.